Good morning. It is my pleasure to call to order this morning Committee of the whole meeting for the Thompson Nicola Regional District Board of Directors. Friday, October 7th, 2022. The TNRD acknowledges that we connect with many First Nation communities across our vast regional district. And today, we are located on the Kamalip Shakutnik territory situated within the unceded lands ancestral lands pardon me of the Shakutnik nation. The TNRD appreciates the partnership that we have with the Kamalip Shakutnik and respect the territory and land on which we gather today. We have to begin with minutes from the June 17th, 2022 Committee of the whole meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed if any? That's carried. That takes us to reports. And we are going to hear from Ms. Hadwin with respect to the three month summary of the Thompson Nicola Film Commission. We've been waiting with bated breath for this, Terry.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. I'm really excited to fill you in on what we've been working towards for the last three months. So yeah, since I've started with my position, which is three months ago now, we've had 23 new production inquiries for filming within the TNRD. And that's and that the TNFC team have been working to assist on. So that's 23 new ones. That's not even including the ones that have been in the copper already that we've been also assisting with. The TNFC has provided escorted scouts for location managers to various TNRD locations on a weekly basis. And to further build external relationships, we have had meetings and held with reps that are local and provincial. And I've attended Vancouver studio site visits, which is pretty pivotal to something that I'll be discussing later. I've attended the Directors Guild Canada BC Locations Forum where I got to meet a lot of location scouts there. I attended a session at the Vancouver International Film Festival. And I also got to take part in a sustainable productions forum. David Suzuki was one of the key speakers, which was pretty exciting for me. I've had multiple community tours and but there's just so much more area that I need to get out there and explore and become more familiar with. And my hope is to get out there monthly, to spend time in each community, to introduce myself, create knowledge of the film industry. And to become more aware of potential film location products to promote. We've had funding been awarded to the Film Commission Department Northern Development Initiative Trust and the Economic Trust. Southern Interior Funds are now being utilized for capturing new imagery throughout the TNRD to be added to our two libraries, Real Scout and Explore TNRD. What's been keeping me very busy is the Studio Site Feasibility Study Contract. Free proposals were submitted for this study. The firm All North has been selected. And once this is completed, this document will complement the existing Nordicity business case study of a studio within the TNRD. And then will be presented in tandem together, the two documents to potential investors. The TNFC team continues to update our image libraries with new locations and updating the existing ones with outdated materials. We continue to grow our local and non-local awareness with our targeted marketing strategies of the real versus real campaigns, which has been very, very popular. On our social channels and the live music Thompson and Pillow website and social media platforms. Some plans for the upcoming future in the upcoming months, I hope to reestablish a film advisory committee. Similar to the structure of a committee that was dissolved during COVID. And this committee would meet twice a year to provide insight into how the TNFC can provide additional measures. To support the film industry growth in the TNRD in a sustainable fashion. And I've saved the best for last, the most exciting news. We've recently had some very big projects coming into the TNRD. Movies of the week are almost a constant running source of filming activity in our area. And we've had a large streaming company recently complete filming in the electoral area I in the last month. And there's quite a few more very major streaming companies that are on the horizon as well. So lots of exciting stuff to fill you in on. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Ms. Hadman. And it's lovely to see you here. You she used to live on my street pretty much. So she's a familiar face. I'm just wondering about the very big names, lots of rumors around the Cache Creek area. Kurt Russell, I think was one that was was bandied about. And I did see a large film camp out near the McAbby fossil beds on a couple of trips in here a couple of weeks ago. Now, I know you're bound by what you can say sometimes about productions, but is it possible? If there is a bigish production like enough that they've set up a camp and they're there for days. To let the electoral area director or the municipal director in the area just know because we do get a lot of people going. Oh, you know what's what's on with you. They see little neon signs everywhere. So is it just possible within the bounds of what you are allowed to disclose just to let people know what's happening in their area?
Yes, absolutely. So communications was made with municipal staff and indigenous groups of the area. But absolutely would love to loop in the TNRD directors. Yes, definitely.
Director Rice? Thank you, Chair, and welcome, Terry. And I know you're a wonderful addition because I've worked with you for many, many years ago, country. But I just was actually going to echo what Director Roden said and stuff, especially in area I, there seems to be a lot going on. And when I drive by and I see the movie set things going on and stuff, just include me in that loop and stuff. And that would be great when you can. And that's awesome because I do have all that's the big question for constituents is what movie is up? And a lot of times I just don't know. So thanks.
Director Watson?
Thank you. And when you said municipal staff and First Nations, I just groan. So often EA directors are left out of the loop about meetings in our area or events in our area. Please remember that that's why we're here.
Are there any further questions or comments for Ms. Hadwin? I'm not seeing any. Well, listen, thanks very much for your presentation. It's always good to hear from the field patient. I hope that you will continue to make regular presentations to the board because the board needs to be kept abreast of of what's going on. I'm hoping keeping my fingers crossed that one day we may indeed have a film studio. So thanks again.
Thank you.
That brings us to the regional growth strategy. I think we might hear from the General Manager of Development Services.
I can only talk if I stand out. I mumble if I sit. So. Good morning, members of the board. Oh, here we go. So. As promised this spring on the regional growth strategy. Staff have been working very hard, particularly our planning technologists, Ursula and myself. To put together the regional growth strategy monitoring report for this year. It's a big one because last year was a census year. And we have about a half hour presentation, myself, Ursula and Jamie. So just sit back, relax and enjoy the numbers. Our not going to get into any background. It's in your reporting your agenda. This data because taught off the presses, including from this morning is not in your agenda. So the sources for this is primarily census, but also BC stats because they're more accurate for population. It's a bunch of data we collect, tabulate and crunch. And some of it and higher expertise where that is what they do. And so look for the source lines at the bottom of the slide. The full sources and links will be in the published report, which will be out as promised year end. If you remember, this was our first monitoring report from 2015. So this is. We're on our fourth monitoring report 2022. It will be published, we think, by the end of this year. Here's the 10 indicators. So we're going to speak to these 10 not transportation. Because the census data is not out on that yet. We anticipate it's going to be in November. So again, once we get that, we hope to publish the full report. Now, if you could please possible hold your questions till the end because then it takes too long. Unless it's a quick question, just as a point of clarification on a statistic. So I think that's it.
Perfect. Thank you. So I'll jump off with our first indicator, which is population. So here we looked at municipal trends from 2019 until 2021. And this is from BC stats. In general, over these last few years, there haven't been really significant changes. But there are some noteworthy population increases between these years that were seen in Logan Lake Clearwater and Sun Peaks. So looking at the TNRD as a whole, over these same years, we've seen a steady growth of about one and a half percent. So from one for about 146,000 to over 148,000. And these TNRD numbers include all the electoral areas, unincorporated areas and all the municipalities. And here we're looking at a greater difference. So here we're looking between. The previous census year, which was done in 2016. And you can see that there's quite a big difference as compared to, you know, looking at the. From 2019, but if we go back to 2016, we can see that over these five years. The rate of population change in the TNRD was over eight percent. And what's particularly interesting is when we compare that to BC as well as to Canada, that rate of change is higher. And here we're looking at demographic trends. So along the left hand side, we have different age groups. So the youngest at the bottom, zero to four, all the way up to 85 plus. Blue is shown is showing BC numbers and green are TNRD numbers. And what's particularly interesting is seeing the the difference between the blue and the green numbers. So what that's showing us is that. There's a greater difference in the demographic makeup between the province and the TNRD when it comes to the working age population. So essentially the TNRD has a lower working age population when compared to the province. And those are roughly ages 15 to 64. And Regina will discuss our next few indicators, starting with housing.
So with about six slides that speak to where are people building what? These the first few slides are just total numbers. So here. For the last five years, we see the total new housing start. So this is when the building permit is issued. And it includes anything from an additional dwelling, a new single family dwelling. If it's a duplex or a house in a suite that counts as two or the placement of a manufactured home. So you can see the spike in 2021. And the majority of that 2021 in order is in electoral area J, P and then M. And a lot of that was waiting and was as a result, there was additional dwellings after the bylaw change this spring. If you recall, for the first time in 50 years, you don't need farm assessment to have additional dwellings on your land. And so we're seeing more construction. Here is the total. So the raw data total number of units by the same measure. So if it's a 10 unit apartment building, it's 10 units. In all the municipalities. And here, if you look at 2020, which was a real spike year, 918 of that thousand plus were in Kamloops. 98 were in Merritt and 12 were in Barrier. And then 2021, 409 were in Kamloops, 93 in Merritt and 35 in Clearwater. So this is raw data. Now let's delve down in a little more detail. Here is what they're building. And again, this relates all these stats relate back to the policy of what's in the regional growth strategy. So here you see a couple of interesting things. First, that big spike in 2020. The vast majority of those in Kamloops were multi-family. So multi-family is anything more than a duplex. It's an apartment or a townhouse. And those are definitions that are used standard across country by CMHC. You also. So if it's a suite or a manufactured home, those are separate here. And by the way, this is total number EA and municipal. I just need to Sun Peaks. I'm sorry. Sun Peaks is not included in that because they couldn't give us the data. So it's almost total. You'll notice a few things first. The number of manufactured homes, and we've seen a pattern of this for more than three years, they just keep increasing. And I think that now I this is just my thoughts. Don't have a source for this. But I believe this is because A, it's so hard to get a contractor in really rural areas. Two, the building code is getting more demanding in terms of energy efficiency. Well, manufactured homes are built to CSA standards. Those are those are lesser. For insulation and what have you. And also. It's the HPO requirements. You don't just need a contractor. You need a contractor that's licensed under the homeowner protection office in this province. So if you can't, you can build a home yourself, but you have to pass an exam, which is really, it's a fair exam, but you have to pass it with 80%. And people do, but a lot of people just not, we're just going to get a manufactured home because they need a roof over their heads. So now let's delve down a little further. Every one of our reports has sought to. Depict or illustrate where are folks buildings in established communities versus rural areas. Now, in established community, I'm just going to define that for you. And each of these little icons are 10 houses or 10, pardon me, 10 residential units. So an established community is a municipality. Or a rural area, say such as Tobiano, where there's water and sewer. Or Savanna, where there's water and fire protection. Now, because we cast the net to include areas with only fire protection as an established community, a lot of those are quite rural. So this this graph has a view total it up. It's about 88% in established communities versus rural is where there's no services whatsoever. Now, most interestingly. As the crow flies. Two thirds of our new housing units in the last two years, so not this year, but 2021, we don't have this year's numbers complete yet. Are within a commute of Kamloops. So that is not, that is excluding Chase, Logan Lake, what have you. Those are the rural areas within a 30 minute drive. Not of the boundary Kamloops because Kamloops is quite large, but the downtown course, so say this building or City Hall. And so it said that's two thirds and we're seeing that number of that kind of construction increase as per the previous sort of raw data. And last, my last slide, and this is this is not in RGS, but I just thought it was interesting. The tenure. So this is from last year's census, almost one third of the people in the TNRD. So EA's and municipalities own their house outright, which will insulate them from interest rate extravaganza. And other kinds of potential recessions and what have you looming on on the horizon. But also we have three quarters of people in the TNRD are in a home where they have a with or without a mortgage. We have a low proportion of renters compared to, and that is all of these things. So of course, it's not just the lower mainland where there's more renters. So this is a critical slide when you think about what could be in our future. And oops, I forgot to click. Sorry. So with that, I will go on to our fourth indicator. We're skipping three because we don't have the data. In terms of our economy. In terms of our economy, so be careful here because uh, the census lumps the Thompson region in with the Okanagan. So all this data has to be, uh, looked at carefully. And going back a few senses, we, I believe our first report went back to two thousand and six. And these three top job opportunities by demand seem to be there, or two of the three, and certainly healthcare and construction, they just changed order. So this is by top demand and, and opportunity. Right now, we have construction at the top. It used to be healthcare. And in terms of employment loss, and again, these categories are set across North America, and they just changed, and they took agriculture used to be lumped in with forestry, fishing, mining, quarrying, oil and gas. They've taken agriculture out now separately. Now, I've done a bit more delving, and we're, I think we're going to have to actually call the census, because I believe from some of the B C data, I could pull from the last year or two, this has actually increased, whereas the census goes back five years, but the amount of jobs, and we, we've seen a lot of loss of forestry jobs, but in the last bit, there's been an increase in demand for quarrying oil and gas, and whether that's, um, trans mountain or new mines, I'm not sure. But again, we're going to check that before we publish the report. And I also called some of the major employers in the T N R D rural areas to find out how are you doing on recruiting and retention? And I promised I would not state which industry they were, because if I gave their names, and some of them have, are willing to provide us more data, but they have to have it approved by corporate. So this is what I'm hearing from folks. Some of these are agriculture industry, so you know, vineyards, fruit and veg. There's just no hope on the horizon for young, strong, reliable staff willing to work and stay for minimum or just above minimum wages. They can't find high school students over summer, but they don't, they don't stay after. And this one, I particularly like this, they almost all, no one wants to go there. And sometimes they're older, reliable, long-term employees. They're just aging out of the heavy lifting that they have to do in a lot of these rural jobs, whether it's on a ranch or a producer of some kind or dairy. And the other, so I also, uh, reached out to one higher-paying employer, because I thought, well, maybe if it's better pay, but even they said, just in the last two years, they have an increased problem with retention and recruitment simply because there's so many other opportunities, and their potential staff can't find housing, whether it's rental housing or finding housing they can afford to buy. So, and that segues into our unemployment rate. So this is August. I checked again yesterday, and the September one has inched up a little bit. Our unemployment rate, remember, this includes the Okanagan and Colonas is always that I could find has been a little lower, so we are a bit above five percent, but there you have a range in our area of the last ten years. Our all-time low was four point nine percent. And, um, I would say part of this challenge with recruitment retention is, as Ursula showed in her population, um, from the B C labor market outlook, our region in the T N R D and Okanagan have the lowest share of working age population in the province. And then they also, they published, most of our stats look backwards, but I thought this was interesting. The labor market outlook going forward for the next ten years um, forecasts in our area that the fastest-growing industries, so again, this is our area, and I believe this one was, did not include the Okanagan. So I T, there's no I T in the room, because they're all busy. Trade and private education, so private education could be tutors or other, other kinds of capacity building folks that maybe work for industry. Travel arrangement services, I think those used to be called travel agents, which I don't understand, but it was there, and machinery manufacturing. So employment. This, uh, is our fifth end indicator. And our, our previous reports take this data back, but I, there's no point in showing it all going back right to two thousand and six. But here is the breakdown where we are. So this is just T N R D, not Okanagan anymore. B C and Canada in terms of the range of median household income after tax income, and this is year twenty twenty, because of course, last year's census in twenty twenty-one, they look at the income from C R A from twenty twenty, the year before, so it's always a lag of a year. So in the T N R D, we've seen a healthy increase since two thousand and fifteen, which would be the two thousand and sixteen census. But we're, so we're ahead of Canada, but we're quite a ways behind the rest of British Columbia. And going down into more detail, here you have the household change in that income, so total median household by jurisdiction in the T N R D. There's two missing, do you know which ones they are? Well, they're not there, because once you get to a really small population, StatsCAN suppresses the data, because, you know, if you have two hundred people and you have a couple of outliers, it could be a breach of privacy. So there you have the range of income in the T N R D, household income. And our sixth indicator, so in environment, our focus in the R G S was on air quality for all kinds of obvious reasons. Here, you have, no, I'm sorry, this is, and I'm going to just be really careful here. This indicator is based upon the monitoring station in downtown Kamloops. There's only one full-time monitoring station twenty-four-seven, and it's on the federal building. They just put in another full monitoring station in Merritt for the, it's going to run a year, collect data. So this is the, 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 one of the most important metrics. It measures the annual mean par- particulate matter. That's two point five, so it's two point five microns or less, so that's a really small stuff that you don't dust off the window ledge. This is the stuff that stays in the air, it travels, you inhale it deep into your lungs. So you see there, the blue line is the provincial objective of eight microns, so the, the small particles, and it's eight microns or less, and the total would be, pardon me, micrograms weight per meter cubed. So you see, we're generally in Kamloops above the norm. It, we were down low for a couple of years. It wasn't, I thought it was the COVID lockdown, nobody was driving to work, but it's not that, it's that they were low fire seasons mainly. You see the peak there in two thousand and seventeen, and looking out that window, there you have August first um, during the fires. And then we had another peak, the tw- I put the twenty twenty-one data in, but according to the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, it has not been scrutinized. And they go through it and check it, which they're in the process of, and it will be released sometime in the next month or two. And you have that peak, and I was going to share this photo. This is us driving August sixteenth of twenty twenty-one by Westfald, looking towards Kamloops and Monty Lake at three forty-five in the afternoon. And I get sick when I look at this photo, so I'm just going to change it.
Director Stamer.
Uh, thank you. Uh, sorry for interrupting Regina, but is there a breakdown in monthly? Like, is there a wave?
Yes, yeah. So I'll get to that in a sec. So just, so we understand what these fire seasons are bringing us, and I, I put, I, this helped me understand, so I thought I'd put it in here. This is from the B C Lung Association state-of-the-air report. They publish one every year. This is from two thousand, I went back ten years, and I pulled this one up from two thousand and eighteen, because it helped me see. So here you have sand. Just for a point of reference, that's what you're dusting. You're not so worried about inhaling it, maybe not too much of it. But there you have, those are the particles of concern. So the two point five um, microns or less in diameter. And those, you see three examples, so pollution, fine dust, and smoke, and how far it travels, so stay suspended and out like that. Those, those are not our wildfires. I believe the, the ministry told me our smoke in the last few weeks has been care of Washington, Oregon fires. Um, so these are the things that we're in, we're inhaling. Now, looking back, and Director Stamer, this is, they have all cut, there's no shortage of data, and we don't have an, an air quality expert on site, so very kindly, the folks, there are experts here in Kamloops at the ministry, and they have kindly offered to draft this indicator and print and explain these numbers for us. But here you see two trends. Generally, from two thousand and eleven to last year, and again, twenty twenty-one numbers have not been certified, but you can still pull them off the, um, databases of the province. The number of days when it's really bad has increased per year. But the number overall, so those are the spikes. So again, you see the spike in two thousand and seventeen and the spike in twenty twenty-one, and that's the mean in a twenty-four-hour circuit, but overall, we've got other good days. But the other thing, and I'll just leave you the, with this, what they explained to me is, these spikes are bad, but just stay inside, don't go outside jogging. But it's often the long-term exposure from wood burning, where you have constant valleys with, um, inversions. So you're there breathing this in. Yeah, there's wildfires in the summer, but it's through the winter as well. That's often where the health impacts really are. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Ursula.
All right, so moving on to our next indicator of health. So before getting into the stats, I just wanted to put up this slide to show that when, when we're talking about our health region, it's the Thompson Caribou Shuswop. So it is a broader area, it includes the T N R D, but it also includes surrounding areas in, um, like the Cariboo Chilcotin, Lilawet, Salmon Arm, and Revelstoke. So one of the metrics that we look at with health is the prevalence of chronic diseases. And this data is from the last two years. And it's comparing the prevalence of chronic diseases in our health region versus the interior health region and the province. And what we're seeing is that compared to B C, our health region has a higher prevalence of certain chronic illnesses, including asthma, osteoarthritis, C O P D, or chronic obstructive pulmonary disorder, substance use disorder. And topping the charts at the very top, uh, is mood and anxiety disorders. So we were and we had a thirty-six percent prevalence rate of mood and anxiety disorders, which is higher than the interior region as well as B C. So diving a little more into the mood and anxiety disorders specifically, this graph is quite interesting. It's showing a longer time span. So over the last twenty years, this is all data from the chronic disease registry, so it is not self-reported data. And I even looked at, because I, I asked myself, what is the mood and anxiety disorder anyways? And it isn't just, you know, somebody goes to the doctor once and says, you know, I'm feeling depressed. It's actually quite, um, specifically defined. And there's detailed criteria that the B C chronic disease registry has for what constitutes a mood and anxiety disorder. So it means one or more hospitalizations with a mood or anxiety disorder diagnostic code or two or more medical visits with a mood or anxiety disorder within one year. And some examples of the diagnostic code would be a manic episode, depressive episode, anxiety disorder, obsessive-compulsive disorder. Uh, and those are just some examples, but it is very defined. And what we see, what's alarming, we are at the top, so we're in red. That's our health region. We're above interior health in orange, and we're above B C, which is in gray. But across all three regions, we're seeing a steady increase over the last twenty years in these mood and anxiety disorders.
Wait, does that include north? Does interior include north, the nor- the, the far north, or just our region? Like, you're saying interior, is that just in the, in the, in the lower, like, that's?
It, it would be the whole interior health region, so that, it goes up to Williams Lake, I believe, and then Quinella is northern health, so that would be separate. Um, the interior health. Yeah, the interior health region doesn't go all the way up far north. That would be northern health. Um, I believe it cuts off at Williams Lake. Can't quite see it fully on here, that it, it includes part of like the Cootenays. It's quite a large area, but it doesn't go far, far north. So this, these next two slides here, um, is data from the B C C D C. So during the pandemic, the, the B C C D C put out surveys, um, asking participants to reflect on their experiences during the pandemic. So their different health behaviors, their different feelings they had. So this is all self-reported data, keeping in mind, and this is from twenty twenty-one. So they did two rounds of the survey, uh, and it had a really good uptake. This data specifically is from round two, which was collected from April till May of twenty twenty-one. And this graph specifically is on different health behaviors, so things like fruit and vegetable consumption, amount of sleep, alcohol consumption. So in general, we were pretty, our health region reported pretty similar health behaviors as the province. Uh, but just of particular note, there was, um, our health region reported higher levels of smoking, a higher prevalence of one or more health conditions, and also a bit higher amounts of physical activity. And again, this is all self-reported data. Another thing that participants were asked to reflect on during this COVID survey was their ease of access to healthcare. So what we're seeing here is that our health region is not unique. We're facing much of the same challenges as the province when it comes to accessing healthcare. And what was particularly, um, stood out from this survey was the difficulty accessing a family physician. So for both our health region and B C, more than seventy-five percent of participants noted that they had difficulty accessing a family doctor. So moving into our eighth indicator, which is agriculture, one of the metrics we look at is farm income. So total gross farm receipts or operating revenues. And this is from StatsCAN, so we're looking at the twenty eleven stats, twenty sixteen, and twenty twenty-one. And what we're seeing is when we compare the twenty twenty-one numbers to the twenty eleven numbers, we, we're seeing that farm revenue in the Thompson, Okanagan census agricultural region, just keeping in mind, this is a broader agricultural region, the data is more accurate for that broader agricultural region. So in that region, the farm revenue increased seventy percent over the last ten years, which is higher than the B C increase, which was about sixty-three percent. Another aspect that we looked at, um, with our agriculture indicator was the selling price per hectare of farmland. And this is data that was compiled by Land Corps. This is a company that tracks all B C land sales, and they sell this data to interested parties like mortgage companies, for example. And so this company pulled stats for us that is just looking at real estate transactions in the T N R D for class-nine pharmacist land. And what we're seeing is that smaller parcels, which are the parcels under eight hectares, are ten times more costly per hectare than parcels that are larger. Than parcels that are larger, the eight hectares are over. So twelve, about twelve thousand five hundred per hectare for a larger parcel versus. A hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred roughly for those smaller parcels. And then finally for agriculture, we also looked at our A L R stats. So this is just how many applications we're getting. For uh, development in, on A L R land. So from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty one, we had thirty A L R applications. This is applications that are either still active or they've been adjudicated by the Agricultural Land Commission. So they've made a decision on the application. We're still seeing a very high number of subdivision applications at thirty seven percent. But this has gone down in years before that number was closer to fifty, fifty percent. And our second most common application is the NARU or non-adhering residential use. This is when someone wants to build a larger residential footprint than they're permitted. And we expect that number to go up in the coming years, uh, with the recent A L R flexibility changes. The A L C's opened it up where. Properties, qualifying properties can have a secondary residence, but it's quite limited in the roast floor area. So we do think that we're going to see higher numbers of those applications. And just the breakdown of what those percentages actually mean. So of those thirty applications, and that's not including cancelled applications. We had about seven of those. There's still quite a bit of work, but we didn't include them because they, they're not working towards. You know, the finish, the finish line, so to speak. So of those thirty, there were eleven subdivision application. Three of those were approved, seven were denied and one is still active. All eight of the non-adhering residential use applications were approved. For the non-farm use, four were approved, three are still active. Two of the exclusions were approved, one was denied and the one inclusion application was approved. And um, I forgot to mention, this is, these thirty applications are for the T N R D and all of the municipalities that have A L R. The only two municipalities that don't have A L R land are Litten and Sun Peaks. And I'll pass it over to Jamie to discuss solid waste generation and diversion.
Thanks, Ursula. Uh, solid waste. So I'm, I'm going to start off by clarifying right up front that the numbers that we're going to put up here. Include the city of Kamloops. So typically, um, are, when I'm up here talking about solid waste. Kamloops is running their own program and we're reporting on T N R D operations only. Now, for this purpose, as well as for our provincial reporting. Um, on solid waste, it always includes the regional district as a whole. So all municipalities and the city of Kamloops included. And, and with that, just a reminder, our regional solid waste management plan that guides all our operations also includes the city of Kamloops in the planning process. So if you think about it operationally, city of Kamloops runs their own thing, but in terms of our targets and our goals that we're trying to achieve, it's collectively altogether. So these are the provincial, um, sorry, the blue line here is the provincial average for solid waste generation per capita. And the green line is our rate. Now. A couple of things to point of clarification on here. When it says provincial average, the way that's calculated is it takes all twenty seven regional districts. And, and divides by those twenty seven to get the average. So it's. What ends up happening when you actually look at the map is the vast majority of regional districts are in the, you know, the southwestern corner. So it's. Skewed in the sense that um, those population centers uh, impact this average more so. Um, so I guess what I'm saying is in the urban areas, um, there's more pressure and, and they're essentially been more progressive in terms of their waste diversion. So that means the more interior and northern regional districts. Um, end up being at the, the higher end of the diversion scale or the sort of waste generation scale. Uh, the other important thing to think about is, uh, you've probably heard me say this before. I always harp on this, that. This disposal rate is really the key indicator. Now you're going to see later, I'm going to talk about recycling amounts and diversion rates. But disposal rate is really the key indicator, because what that is, is how much waste is ending up in landfill. So just because you're recycling lots as a, as a municipality or, or a regional district, doesn't necessarily mean you're actually reducing the amount of waste to landfill. So our solid waste management plan has this as our target, um, of what the disposal rate should be. And uh, interestingly, uh, well, I shouldn't say interestingly, almost purposefully, that as part of our last solid waste management plan, our target was set. At what that provincial average is. So keeping in the back of our minds that our twenty twenty eight target is to achieve five hundred kilograms. Generation per capita uh, by the end of our plan. So another thing to point out, it's here, you see a steady increase from twenty sixteen up to twenty nineteen. Now, I, I should, I should clarify that. We don't have, th- this level of detail is just what's going in the landfill. So a lot of my commentary is. Based on my experience of what I think is happening, but we don't have any hard detailed numbers of exactly what each individual household, each individual community is throwing out. So, so with that, what I think is happening here with this increase from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, as you recall, back in twenty sixteen seventeen. Was when we had to make a dramatic change at many places in the province in their recycling program. And we saw this um, one bag throw out all your recycling into one bag, make it really easy. We had to end that. So uh, we saw more of those recyclable materials ending up in the garbage. As we sort of retrain people on source separation. Uh, now the caveat to that also is that if you remember when we were going through that transition, that a lot of what was called recycling was actually just garbage. That was going in the recycling bin. So that wasn't counting against us because it wasn't ending up in our landfill. It was going in. To a recycling processor and ending up probably in someone else's landfill, um, either, you know, somewhere else in North America or even perhaps overseas. Uh, the other big indicator or the big um, uh, influence here over, you know, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one is, you know. The pandemic changed a lot of things, a lot of habits. Uh, so I, I think that's partially why we see a decrease in twenty twenty that um. Uh, keep in mind, solid waste generation is a direct indicator of economic activity, or you could, you could say that both ways. So as economic activity slows down, waste generation slows down as it increases, waste generation increases regardless of, of your diversion. And recycling programs. So, but moving forward, obviously, we still have a long way to go to get down to. That provincial average and our target of five hundred kilograms per hectare, or sorry, five hundred kilograms per person. So how do we get there? Um, this is from the waste composition study we did in twenty nineteen. This is what actually is in our garbage ending up in the landfill. So this was T N R D specific data that we, that we uh. Did a, a region-wide assessment where we actually had contractors breaking open garbage bags at different landfills. Uh, and different transfer stations throughout the T N R D. So the most obvious one is that big green compostable organic material, thirty percent. So even though going back here, it looks like we have a long way to go. Thirty percent is a big chunk of our organics and um, one of our key. Uh, recommendations of the solid waste management plan that we're working towards is removing those organics through curbside organics. Or local organics, uh, diversion programs. Happy, you know, that the city of Kamloops is moving forward with their now citywide organic collection program that's starting next year. So we're expecting that that's going to take a significant chunk out of uh, that amount of material that's ending up in the landfill currently. The, the second big chunk, I'll combine the two, is actually the dark green, the non-organic compostables and the building materials. So non-organic compostables. It's, it's a long list of things, but the biggest chunk of what's ends up in that category is wood waste, uh, like construction wood waste. So that's still ending up in the landfill and then all those other building materials. So the other key of our solid waste management plan is to increase diversion in those programs. Specifically targeting diversion opportunities for the, the commercial uh, building and construction sector. So these are our diversion rates and, and again, we, we don't want to read into these too much. Uh, this is how much is getting recycled. Recycled at disposal sites. What this doesn't capture is what's getting recycled or diverted elsewhere. So the way we calculate these numbers is between T N R D facilities and city of Kamloops facilities. We essentially take the total amount of material that comes through the gate. And, and figure out the percentage of how much ends up in the landfill and how much ends up in those recycling programs. But so if you, you know, sell something or give something away, or you um. Bring it to a bottle depot for recycling or some other mechanism, it doesn't get reflected in these numbers. But it still is an indicator of sort of how much total recycling we are provide, the recycling services we are providing at the facilities. So interestingly, interestingly, here in twenty twenty, um, we saw a big jump in diversion. Even though in twenty twenty, we had um. Uh, a lower waste generation per capita rate. And I don't really have an explanation of, of why that happened. Part of me suspects it had to do with the dramatic change in um. Eating out, takeout and people now having all these takeout containers that were recyclable in, in a, uh, in recycled B C's program. So perhaps it's more of that and just different habits during the pandemic contributed to um. Yeah, more material being recycled, but more waste being created in the first place. Yeah, and, and, and the, the top number there is the total kilograms and the actual percentage is the percentage of the amount of material that's deployed. Now, where do we end up in the province? So we're down here at. Barely near the bottom of the list in terms of our waste generation per capita. So we definitely have a long way to go. Again, a reminder um, that this is influenced by economic activity. So this includes um, a lot of industrial waste. So uh, what I didn't mention earlier, that one of the uh. Major projects going on in the T N R D is this trans mountain expansion. And um, if you go to our Lewis Creek, especially our Clearwater Eco Depot site, there is a significant amount of extra waste going into that stream. Uh, things like tourism also impact that. So as tourism increases, you get more waste generation. You know, they sound like excuses and they're not meant to be excuses, but it, it, it's just meant to think about how. It's, it's not a, it's not a simple calculation to figure out how, how we need to improve, but long story short is, we want to move up that list. And reduce our, our, our waste generation per capita. Sorry, sorry. Yes, that was, no, this, this is waste generation per capita. Oh, I see, I see, I see. I got you. Director Staber.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, to, to Jamie. Thanks for the presentation, Jamie. On the, back to the organics. I know that, you know, multiple jurisdictions, including Vancouver have made it legal or whatever to take that out. What's the? What's the best way, if you're, if council is going to be picking it up for our rural areas, and I mean barrier, we've always been proactive on the recycling program. When do you see a time when we are not going to be accepting organics into the solid waste? What, what is your, what is your timeline on that? Because we're trying to get ahead of it with more, you know, composters and people's yards and things like that. What, what kind of a timeline are you looking at? Because I mean, that's a significant number, thirty percent.
So uh, good question, and I'm going to dodge it a little bit because I can't tell you what our timeline is on that, but what I'll say is that. Um, and those of you who were at the solid waste meeting a couple of days ago, we talked about our cardboard disposal ban. So um, this board has endorsed the mandatory recycling bylaw. The first thing that's in that bylaw that we're now enforcing on is cardboard. And the, the bylaws designed to add material to that. Um, bylaw that forces you essentially says you can't put this in the garbage. It must be recycled either here or elsewhere. Cardboard's number one. The next thing that we'll move to is all other stewardship programs. So all recycled B C products, things that, and also things like light bulbs and tires. All those that have provincial programs. What goes down that list and where Metro Vancouver got to about five years ago is they added organics to that. But all those other. Lower hanging fruit, easier to recycle things were top of the list. So I, I'd answer that question with saying, we have a few more things to add to that list before we get to organics. But the ultimate goal is to also have organics banned from landfill.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be proactive to be trying to get ahead of it, say, early in the spring? See if we can start encouraging some of our residents to start. Doing that now. So, and, and I mean, I'm not trying to nail you down on the timeline, but I'm just suggesting time-wise. It's harder in the winter time, but in the spring, isn't that something that we, maybe we should be bringing forth and saying, hey, here's an opportunity for us to start, you know, trying to get ahead of this. And instead of waiting a year or two years, let's do it within the next six months.
Yeah, yeah, fair comment. And, and I, I would say we are always encouraging that and, and we have programs in place. And so the, the idea is you get the programs in place, so it's reasonably accessible. Then you put the law in that says you can't throw this in the garbage anymore. Director O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thanks to all the staff. That was a very intensive report and I just have a couple of questions for Jamie, actually. Um, the first one being, I didn't quite understand uh, the first graph that you had up there regarding the total solid waste. There doesn't seem, seem to be, uh, you know, I understand in sixteen where there was the jump for both. Ourselves and B C, but we continued that trend line up. And B C didn't, they slowly went down. So I wonder uh, why that happened. And then. Um, my second question is going to the last slide is that I don't really know if we're actually going to, you mentioned we want to move up that list to get less. I don't know if that's actually going to happen based on your comments saying, well, it's based on industrial that in your area. Well, that's who we are. We're never going to match what Vancouver is doing or the lower mainland. It's, it's very different. So I just don't think. A goal to try and get higher up that list, like, yeah, it'll be smaller, but to move up the list, I don't, I don't know if that'll happen, but I'd love for your comment. Thank you.
So good questions. Uh, for this graph. I guess a, a few thoughts on my comment around uh, seeing this increase when we had to transition away from a, a, a single stream recycling program to a source separated. Many of the uh. Lower mainland areas and regional districts on the island and, and Vancouver area already had. Source separation in place, so they didn't have to make this dramatic transition. I still think that bump to twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen had to do with that China National Sword. But, but also I. Careful to be overconfident of that being the only indicator or the only contributor to this change. I, I can't say definitively. What contributed to that. I'm just speculating on sort of what was happening in the market. Um, there, there could be other things that, that really we don't know about. At the end of the day, we're seeing it increase. Dramatically and, and you know, economic activity is always a big one. And you know, what options were there and what changed in the industry, the other two, the other thing that I'm looking at.
To Director Blackwell. Yeah, a couple of good comments in there that you made, especially about the Trans Mountain project, the amount of uh, construction waste and other types of waste that went straight into the garbage bins. There's a lot of building materials that went into mixed construction waste. Um. So you got massive amounts. I mean, football fields worth when they were building the camps and stuff. Um, specific question though is on commercial recycling uh, for things like cardboard and that sort of thing. Um, that still goes across the scale and is counted by weights or do they get to recycle for free? On sort of businesses when they dump recyclables? How is that working right now?
Thanks uh, for that. So the. At, at the T N R D operated sites, we accept commercial cardboard for recycling and it's charged the same rate as garbage. So they would go over the scale, pay eighty dollars time. Residential cardboard recycling is free of charge.
Okay, supplemental to that, um, what I'm seeing at our Eco Depot is absolutely no. Indication that anybody is being enforced on. I mean, I've seen bins full of used oil containers go straight into our garbage. Um, like blue bits, giant bits. Um. And it, it's, it's been really concerning to watch that. Um, and I, I really think next term. You know, as a board, we need to really sort of support whatever financial needs are. To make sure that there is some enforcement of what's going on. And you see it definitely more with transfer station garbage that is dumped into clear water. Uh, from remote areas, but you also see it from industrial customers that basically decide that if you're going to pay full rate for garbage, why bother? Um, we need to figure out at least some sort of carrot for industrial garbage to be recycled. Thank you.
Uh, Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my question is for both. Jamie and Regina, um. When we look at the growth strategy. And the amount of people that are now. Becoming part of the regional district outside the municipalities, that creates more garbage. So, I'm I'm looking to see uh if. The two combined. We need to put into the regional growth strategy. Some strategy to deal with that kind of waste that is outside the municipalities, and also. Um, maybe Regina could talk about the. Growth strategy and where it's going with the O C Ps, because I think we have O C Ps that are. Quite old now. And when I look at at the graph and know that Area J and Area P. Are both leading the pack. In growth, then I think we need to take a look at that in the in the near future. Um, and can that be accomplished?
I I can make a quick comment on the the population and how it impacts the the solid waste, you're you're absolutely right, the more people you have, the more waste. Um, in in total, and that's why I go back to, well, you'll always see me using this indicator. The disposal rate of kilograms per person per year, so even as your population goes up, you may fill up your landfill faster, but that doesn't necessarily mean. It's more garbage per person, and so this is the best indicator of how we're doing.
And besides Trans Mountain Construction. As per our building permit stats you get in your agenda, it's been going up steadies for ten years every year, and construction generates waste. Um, in terms of O C Ps. Absolutely, I agree with you, and we have ones. That, you know, the Cache Creek Ashcroft Fringe O C P that hasn't been touched for decades. Our staff, you know, we have two and a half planners, and they spend their time answering phone calls and. Processing the applications that usually fill up your agendas. That's where, and that is the priority, is that public service, our long range planning always suffers. Because we just trying to carve out time, we're fully aware, but it's carving out the time out of all the other things we have to do on a more higher priority. That is the challenge.
So Regina, how do, other than, I guess, um. Hire a consultant to do a couple of uh O C Ps, is is it possible to do in-house, or do we just need new staff? More staff? If you don't want to ask.
That is a very, that's a long answer question, um. I think it is, I've taken the approach. I I know before my time here, they hired more consultants. Um, and sometimes the consultants got the good work. And staff would be, you know, processing the grunt work. So we've tried like with the last O C P in um Cherry Creek. Savanaw, we did it in-house with staff, and it took three years. The North Thompson O C P for electoral areas, A B and O, we did it in-house with staff. And we divvy it up between staff, and so each staff. Has their own O C P that's on their corner of their desk, the problem is it's on the corner of the desk and it keeps getting sh- shuffled, so I don't want to hire consultants for it. Is, um, I. I'm thinking that if we slow down in applications. We have lots of work to do, then we can keep our staff, and I think that our building permits, I think. They've, I think we've peaked. So don't forget planning processes each building permit as well. So I'm thinking we'll have more time in the next year or two.
Thank you, Director Watson.
Thank you, on the uh compostable organics, um. We have had a uh. Bear issue in our neighborhood this year. Uh, caused by somebody baiting bears with apples, and and then the bears became habituated. And uh we're looking for garbage and uh compost bins. Um, how do we? Work that out, I I know that if I close my plastic compost bin appropriately, a bear can't open it, but. Not all. Compost bins are created equal.
Yeah, a good question, and that's that's often a a challenge, and it's a legitimate challenge. I I will say, though, that that proper composting techniques and composters are mu- are. Are much less of a bear attractant uh than others, so there can be ways of doing that, um. But it's, I mean, i- in every area, we need to be reasonable, um, and, you know, and even certain times of year, do you not? You know, actively compost because of the bear bear problem, yes, we're we're not. We we need to consider that when we're talking about, um, you know, things like actually enforcing uh bylaw on. On not being allowed to put out organics, so that's why, again, it's further down the list, it's not a simple, straightforward answer.
In in that regard, uh, I have a T N R D composter. And we had a bear. Uh, it must have been a friendly fellow because he was very close to the house. Um, it never went near our T N R D composter, it didn't seem to act as an attractant at all. Uh, Director Singh.
Uh, thank you, Trigulis, I thank you very much, great report, uh, we enjoy, we all, you know, stats every year. A couple of questions on the, again, the composting and the uh. Um, recycling program, so, um. One question, I I guess, I was interested in the the idea about recycled B C being a, be actually being a um. Uh, a force of actually reducing cycling in in the in the real real district, and I wonder whether. Uh, the recycle B C program is actually something that we could. Lawry to improve, or, you know, what's happening there, because they they it seems to have been. I don't know, the national sort of came in, you know, they're they're not taking glass and those kinds of things, but still. Seems like it it's 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 much less. So that's, I guess, one one thing, um, I can go through the mall, you can comment whichever you want to comment on, um. The other thing that I was no- noting is, um, the um composting program in Campbell's, the questions we had around. You know, transportation long distances of the actual material and people doing it at their homes, I know in Nelson, actually, they're actually giving each of the residents. A machine called a food cycler. And that machine is composting actually in the house, and that's just creating soil. Um, and they, the the city is actually paying for that, I wonder whether the the R D might might consider something like like that, cause it's like, but uh. It solves a couple of the problems potentially that that we've having, um. The um. The construction waste is an interesting one, and you know, when you're taking down now. Taking a single family home to create more density or whatever you are, um, all that material, and there's, I guess, some some companies now on the coast are actually, um. Uh, specializing in reuse. Uh, of old materials and homes, they call unbuilders or something like that, uh, that's a very interesting sort of um. Uh, possibility there, and the last thing I was gonna ask about, or just comment on, was. The idea of organics to energy, um, and uh the idea of um. Whether it becomes renewable natural gas or whatever it becomes in the end, it seems like that's a. A growing thing we have to consider, and it it might be something to kind of look at, so. It's comments, staff can comment themselves, just wanted to put on the table.
Mr. Vera.
I I I'll make a few comments on that, yeah, the the recycle B C observation definitely is correct, um, that. That that change that we had to go through. Cause the amount of recycling to decrease, but I would also. Um, note that the contamination that was in our recycling was kind of unreported, so. Again, the quality of recycling and the actual recyclability of that material. Before we made that tr- transition was questionable, so. Yeah, that that's, that's what I always clarify there, cause it was an, it was an odd situation, um. And it was, it was a challenging transition, but at the end of the day, I think we're better for it, because it's, we have a product that's actually. Been able to be properly recycled now, and and it was questionable previous. Um, uh, also, I guess, a comment on the the organics and and sort of the other technologies around organics to energy. There there's definitely a lot of technologies out there, um, we did look at that through the solid waste management plan process. Um, and, uh, you know, technology is always changing, but when we did a bitter, but a deeper dive. It, those technologies are still. Need to be at the very, very large scale to make it economically feasible, and that's, um. Again, may continue to change and likely will continue to change, but that 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 was sort of where we were at in two thousand and eighteen when we looked at it.
Director Roden.
Uh, thank you, the the national sort thing in China, we had one of those one size fits all recycling bins in Ca- in Ashcroft, people loved it. People don't like the new system. They don't understand it, we have so many people saying, I don't understand what I can and can't recycle. Like, why this plastic and not this plastic, also the relocation, and this is not the T N R D's fault, they stepped in to help us. The location for the last four years up a goat track, as some people have described it. A lot of people do not go up there, they hate the road, they, it's dusty, it's rutted, in s- wintertime, people slide around. They're competing with the dump trucks going up to the Campbell Hill landfill. And this is, I think, where. The T N R D can really help a lot, not just in Ashcroft, Cache Creek, with the new Eco Depot, with educating, which I keep banging on about, sorry, Jamie. Um. We hear in municipalities, what does the T N R D do for us? We pay them so much money on our property tax bill every year, what do we get for that? People honestly don't know. They have no clue. So this, I think, would be a good education opportunity for the T N R D to kill two birds with one stone, A, show municipalities what they do do. Or one of the things they do, and also. Do a big education campaign about recycling, you know, try and see if it can be simplified about what you can and can't recycle and. Uh, talk about the facilities and what they offer and what you can take there and what you can, I mean, in Ashcroft, Cache Creek, great, we're gonna be able to take some. Stuff to the Eco Depot that we can't take to the transfer station. That's wonderful, we need to work on getting that news out there to people, that now you can take this to the. The Eco Depot, you don't have to throw it in the garbage, and, you know, if we're gonna do that for Ashcroft, Cache Creek. Why not just do it everywhere and remind people, we've had a lot of new people move here. They don't know, and with COVID shutting everything down, there weren't these education opportunities. I think this is a good way for the T N R D to to step up and show what they do for for residents.
And finally, Director Stamer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick ones, uh, number one, in re- reference to uh Director Blackwell's comments, um. You know, that shouldn't be occurring, um. I mean, the Lewis Creek Eco Depot, from what I can see, is is run pretty tight, and. So my question to Mr. Vera is, A, are these transfer stations being supervised properly, and when that. Material is coming into the Eco Depots that it's being screened, and two, what kind of um. Camera systems do we have in place so that, for example, at the Lewis Creek Eco Depot? If you think that you're gonna go across the scales and try to get rid of something that you shouldn't be getting rid of in the main building. What stopgaps do we have so that if somebody's trying to get away with something like that? Then we can stop them on the way back and say, I'm sorry, this is what I bought on the on camera, you're gonna pay us a fine. For trying to dump this when you shouldn't have been doing that, like, are we able to do that kind of stuff?
Short answer is yes, we do have uh ability to find, so now back to your previous question, uh, Director Stamer was. Uh, or or your comment around the uh disposal bans, or currently. Um, the only recyclable that we can find for someone putting in the garbage is cardboard. Now, the intent is that by in next year, we we plan to bring to the board a recommendation to add materials to that list. So other recycled materials, which would include things like, um, just for example, like. Oil containers that are easily recyclable, so right, and using that oil container example, right now, if someone puts an empty oil container in the garbage. It is recyclable, but it's not against our bylaw to put it in the garbage. Well, full is different, so for, so hazardous material is against our bylaw to dispose of, so we can enforce on that as well, so. To your comment about camera systems in the Eco Depots, we do have, you know, camera systems high up. Can we tell what's in someone's garbage bag? No, if it's a blatant violation, do we stop them at the scale? And and that an incident report will then come through our office, yes.
I mean, on the on the the second question about the transfer stations, there seemed to be some some discussion on, you know, some of that. Some of that contamination coming in from the transfer stations, uh, aren't all the transfer stations supervised?
Yeah, all transfer stations are man-staffed and supervised, yeah.
Good, Director Brown.
Thank you, and my comment was back with the uh potential for a consultant looking at the O C P. Our staff, uh, all of our senior staff got together and decided that they would not use a consultant. Because of what Regina was saying, half the time. You're working for the consultant anyways, giving them the data and everything that they need to put in their report, so they decided to do it for themselves, it took them a year. It was a really ambitious plan, we had ten hyperactive, I don't know how many, uh. The staff were hyperactive, they they, they were working through evenings, through the night, through weekends, uh. Not many staff are willing to work the length of time these guys did, but we did get a plan that was within the year. Um, and the funny thing is, just at the time we went to approve it for its first reading. Was, I think, our December fourth meeting, and we'd already had a massive flood that year, so we had to. Put it aside for the following year anyways, but we don't have a lot of those staff anymore, I mean, between. The O C P, the fires and the floods, we burned them out, and they've moved on to other things, so, um. Yes, it's possible with staff, it's probably a great thing with staff, but it will wear them out, and their ordinary day-to-day stuff will. Will be pushed uh to the side because I have, they they can't do both.
Good, Director Schaefer.
I'd just like to make a remark on something that Director Rhodes said, we do have brochures. That are, that have been sent out concerning what we're allowed to recycle and what we're not, but they really do need updating and resent out as far as I'm concerned. But we do have them, I still got mine.
Thank you, I have a quick question for uh Mr. Vera. Because I share uh the uh the concerns that were expressed by by Chair Roden, and in the sense that. Brochures or not, it's really confusing what you can, what you can recycle and what you can, you you got a, one kind of a plastic bag. Goes in one bin, and another kind of a plastic bag goes in another bin, if you have an egg carton that is absolutely white. It goes in one styro- styrofoam uh bin, but if somebody happened to print Joe Blow's egg service on the top of it in ink. It goes into a different bin, and it's just too much for people, and. I understand the the reasons that this has become the. The rule, I mean, you and I have talked about it, Mr. Vera, and and it's it's certainly not the T N R D's fault that. The whole world order in terms of uh recycling changed when when China decided they didn't want to accept it in the stuff anymore, but. I'm just wondering, is there any light at the end of this particular tunnel? Is there anything on the horizon that we could look forward to in the next five or ten years? I've heard rumors of. Machines that take the whole thing and separate it out, and they're a bazillion dollars each, but it sounds like it, they might be worth it. Is there any light in the, at the end of that tunnel?
Ooh, that's a good question, a hard one to answer, uh, is there light at the end of the tunnel, maybe, uh. So, I I to to answer it it briefly, um, I don't see, um. That that, I agree, the separation can be complicated, so I think part of the light of the tunnel is people. Slowly and eventually just accepting that this is the mechanism, and and learning that this is the mechanism for recycling in the rural areas. Um, you know, the good news is, and the technology for separation is there, and that's why most municipalities still have a single cart system. But the provincial organization that controls essentially all the household recycling has said. This is how it works at depots, it must be separated, and this is how it works for curbside, where a curbside collection exists, that it can be. Commingled, and their entire provincial system is set up that way, and. If we, as we've been through this board before, where we had to. Adopt their system, or else we had nowhere to send our material, so. It's unfortunately one of those situations that we're just one part of the big, you know, provincial system. That we have to. Live with, and we we will continue to sort of advocate for. Making it easy, and and we're not the only ones to comment on the the challenges for the depot system compared to how much easier it is with the curbside system, but. I don't know if it'll change anytime soon, it's, I guess, my answer.
Thank you, Director Watson, then the Director Wathenberger, and then we're moving on.
Through the chair to Jamie, um, what kind of fines are we facing because of? Um, contamination of the wrong kind of bag in, um, are we facing serious fines? um contamination of the wrong kind of bag in um, are we facing serious fines?
As per our agreement with Recycle B C, the potential for fines is there. We have never received a fine.
Because I was thinking that if the potential for fines is serious, wouldn't and um, an extra attendant make all the difference in the world at the recycle bins?
A good comment, and when we have increased at some of the busier sites, especially actually during COVID, increased the amount of attendance to help with that separation, and we design the sites. That way, the new the new Cash Creek Eco Depot is an example of that, where the design has changed, that there's going to be an attendant right there in the recycle area to to assist with the separation.
Uh, Director Rothenberger.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to suggest that there is some light at the end of the tunnel when it comes to um, recycling confusion. I've found that when the individual bins first went in, there was actually a lot of resistance to it. People are saying, there's no way I have the time to separate this stuff. My life is too busy. Can't be bothered with it. I'm not, you know, gonna do that anymore. But over time, people are becoming conditioned to it, and it's not, it's not difficult. Um, even at my age, I can figure out which bin to put stuff in because there's words I can read, and there's pictures. Like, how tough, you know, how tough is it? Um, and and depending on the attend- attendant, some are better than others, but I do see the tenant quite often, you know, checking things out and moving stuff around as need be. But I don't think it's really overall for most people a big problem anymore, and they they have adjusted to it. Might be different than somebody else's transfer station, but that's uh, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Uh, Director Brown, is your hand up, or is that a uh recycled hand from an earlier comment?
No, it's up. Um, I just wanted to state that we need to be a little careful with the fines and with the charges that we put out to the public because if they think it's too expensive to take it, or if they're gonna be fined for things that they throw in by mistake, or or however they throw it in there, that there's a whole lot of countryside that they are willing to dump it in instead. So we really have to make sure that we bring them to the Eco Depot, not drop sites all over the backroads.
Thank you for that. Okay, there are no further questions. We do have a recommendation. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none all in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Takes us to zoning bylaw, twenty-four hundred minimum parcel size. Ms. Adelkova.
I promise to be quick. Uh, a few slides. The information is in your report, and all the work we did is in the spreadsheets attached. So, um, before I begin, I I do need to advise you. I think this has been one of the most professionally and personally difficult reports I've ever done and presented in front of this board. And probably in all my planning career, or consulting too. So why are we doing this? The we were charged with this by the board in May. Um, we also did a similar presentation and research in two thousand eighteen. We did not use that. We started all again. Alex and I did this over the last two months anew. So what we did, land use regulations, we surveyed almost all the regional districts, certainly all the ones in our area and similar. We looked at their bylaws for zoning, mostly, not all only zoning, but mostly zoning. We looked at the maps, because every bylaw has small zones. You can't just compare without looking at the maps in the process. So we have zones that are tiny, like in Pritchard where there's water and sewer, or Tobiano. That's not what we're looking at. We're looking at our rural zones only. So in our case, we have two rural zones, the RL one and the AF one, and I'll get to those. So we looked at the rural zones in other regional districts, but we also ended up looking at the processes, and I'll get to that when I talk about our subdivision process and rezoning. Legally, it's all the same rezoning, but it's not applied in the the reality is not the same. So there you have what we did. We also, after we got all the data, we called the planning managers in this regional district to ensure we had it right. Some of them got their their full count of all their zones, so they told us, you know, you know, forty-two percent of our region is this zone, and fifty-one percent is this zone of rural areas. So we wanted to make sure we're not picking a zone, like, all right, we have an AF two zone. But unless you did your homework through G I S, you wouldn't know, heck, it only applies to less than ten properties in the regional district. So there's zones, zoning bylaws, that have one zone that applies to only one property in the whole regional district. We didn't want to look at that zone. So here you have a quick map. We didn't look at the Yukon border, we didn't look at Metro Van, we didn't look at Capital Regional District, but we looked at almost all the regional districts you see there. Certainly, all the ones surrounding us, except for so central Okanagan, because they are different. So what is the norm in B C? Basically, our rural zone RL one is four hectares. So they're anywhere from eight to ten to whatever bigger. For their base rural zone, our um AF one, not AF two, remember, there's almost no zones, I'll I'll show you that in a sec. The AF one is eight hectares. Again, doesn't compare. What people call, what we call small holdings at five hectares or two, pardon me, five acres, two hectares, small holdings. They call it small holdings, but require four or eight hectares. It's all relative. So parcel counts. The two zones we looked at, and there you have the minimum parcel area, AF one is eight hectares. It's our biggest zone in terms of minimum lot area. RL one is four hectares. There you have the total parcel counts in the T N R D. So those are legal parcels, they're not unsurveyed, untitled crown land. And the AF one and the RL one apply to ninety percent plus of the regional district. Now, so who provincially with our survey, who's the outlier? Well, we absolutely are. Um, who's at the other end? So, believe it or not, Comox Valley, their bylaws are their rural, then they're a tiny regional district with three municipalities, four to forty hectares, but for the purposes of subdivision, they rely on what's in their R G S, which is the minimum lot of four hundred. Because they basically said, we do not want our rural areas subdivided out. If you want to develop and have housing, put it in Courtney Comox or Cumberland. So which R D was the closest to us? Well, actually, it was the Fraser Valley, Fraser Valley, where even though their A L R is thirty-two hectares, ours is four or eight or smaller. Um, but for the purposes of development, they apply their O C P, which require much larger parcel area. So, and they all, the other thing, almost all the regional districts told us is, there's almost no subdivision in the rural areas. There's, you know, a few subdivisions a year, and if there's going to be a bunch of parcelling off, it comes to their board as a rezoning application, and it goes through the process. That's not the case here. The only subdivision applications that you see are ones in the A L R, because legally, it's by statute, you have to see them. But then the final say is typically with the A L C. Um, when you look at in the five years, not counting this year, um, the vast majority of all subdivision was approved and is out there, but hasn't been to our board because they just subdivide into four or eight hectare parcels. Um, so we've, you know, there's, we've created two hundred and fourteen new residential lots in the T N R D in that time. This is not municipalities, this is just rural areas. Just for comparison, I called the city and spoke with the city approving officer, and they were quite taken aback, because, yeah, City of Kamloops, they're constantly dealing with subdivision. But, you know, their numbers are half of what ours, but I expected, pardon me, our double Rs, we're half. I expected that difference to be more than it is. Um, who am I? So almost none of those subdivisions went to the board for approval, where in almost all the regional districts that we've talked to, that wouldn't happen. They they have the larger parcel area, so they don't have the subdivision on the in their rural areas or on the perimeter perimeter of their municipalities. So when we did this in two thousand eighteen, we did this because um, your A A C, Agriculture Advisory Commission, which is not made up of fancy pants planners, it's made up of ranchers and farmers, some of whom have their families have been here, working in the T N R D for over a hundred years. They recommended that our parcel areas are ridiculous. Never mind what the A L C thinks, I'm not even gonna get into that, or the Ministry of Agricultural Things. You have the stats earlier from our regional growth strategy, we know what the numbers are, these are to the penny. We don't um, we also, perfect, so we also see, I mean, there is, there's a lot of hope on the horizon in the T N R D. Um, but it, you know, maybe it's not in forestry when you look at the stats, but this is the kind of regional district I want to work for. None of these things would happen on four hectare or two hectare or one hectare lots. Um, and so, and we also referred this, like I said, to the city. They support staff. You you're going to be discussing, according to the resolution, which I would point out was passed unanimously, reducing parcel area. That's certainly not what the city folks in planning say, it's not what we recommend, it's not what the A A C recommends. It's not um, what anybody recommends. We recommend increasing them, not, I mean, I can see you don't, might not want four hundred hectares like Comox Valley. But, like I said, nothing good in the long term in this regional district will come from further reducing our already extravagantly low parcel areas. Sorry? My heart is beating. And that's about it. So I told you I'd be fast. I was fast.
Director Quinn? Are are you done? Are you open to questions at this point, Ms. Adelkova?
Of course.
Oh, okay. I didn't know whether you were done or not, so there was an interrupt to that.
I could pack up.
So I've got Director Quinn, just a minute, hands up, please. Uh, Director Quinn, Director Rothenberger, Director Elliott, and Director Rice.
Thank you, Chairman, to uh, Mr. The to the planner. Of the uh subdivisions you're talking about in A L R, uh, you said there were forty, four hundred and thirty-one if it completed. How many of those are within the fifty K radius of Kamloops?
Well, the vast majority of the applications are within Kamloops commuting area.
Thank you.
Especially, and I would, so the housing numbers you looked at earlier this meeting, a lot of those are because the zoning bylaw changed this spring. Subdivisions, those, a subdivision takes a lot longer than a building permit.
Thank you, Director Rothenberger.
Thanks, Ed. It it is a good report, I really appreciate it, and I know it took a lot of work. Uh, I have a question first of all. Has the provincial government ever considered this issue in the context of the need for more housing properties? Uh, as opposed to strictly agricultural considerations?
So the regional districts we looked at, almost all of them, just like us, have housing. Again, up at the Yukon border, it might be different, but I didn't talk to those. Um, almost all of them are very aware, and their their long-range plans, as as required by statute, have to speak to housing needs. But they have referred those to be in municipalities where there's water, sewer, schools, shopping, et cetera.
Oh, Mr. Chair, this is one of the things I I struggle with on on this issue, because all of the talk these days is about housing, 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 we don't have enough of it, we gotta get more uh of all kinds. Um, and and recently, there's, you know, it's been in the news that the city of Kamloops, for example, has almost no housing property left. They're 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 down to the the single digits on on what they've got available. And and so it's a major concern, and yet we have buffers around the city of Kamloops to basically restrict land that might be available for housing. And and minimum lot sizes. And I note that it's pointed out that there's no ideal size for farmland. And so one size doesn't fit all, and that one regional district is different from another. Fraser Valley is a totally different ball of wax than the Thompson-Eckel Regional District is when it comes to agricultural land and and how it's zoned and used. Um, and as I said, um, you know, acreages are not a low-cost housing option, but there is a need for all kinds of different uh levels and ranges of of housing. Um, I know that, I understand that larger acreages are uh the market value of them is much less than smaller acreages. But we're not talking about the difference between eight hectares and a hundred hectares, we're talking about the difference between eight and four. And once you get to eight hectares and less, uh, there there's not that much of a of a range in price. So I don't really feel that that's a factor. I wonder if it's possible to have if we protect uh rural living and farming, but at the same time, increase the opportunities somewhat uh through a a slight reduction in the in the maximum lot size, and at the same time, we'd be increasing the the tax base. And 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 by the way, we we had a discussion about secondary dwellings a few months ago, which kind of kind of ties into this. And and the 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 restriction that the province has put on on the maximum size of secondary dwellings in certain situations. And I I gather that the uh response from the Minister of the U B C M on our concerns about that was not particularly favorable. So, you know, provinces putting restrictions on providing more housing opportunities and, but we we have uh uh basically, we have control over over zoning issues, so we can do something about it. Um, and I I do, I I think the recommendation is appropriate if it's intended to uh send the the report for information and discussion uh to the uh to the board a- as a whole, because it's certainly a bigger issue than we can fully discuss today. And uh, I I would just hope that some of the thinking around this will will include the possibility that what we've been doing might be a little bit out of date, because things are different now than they were in nineteen eighty-four or whenever, uh, you know, the the current practices and policies were first put in place. Um, I'd I'd also like to see, Mr. Chair, a greater opportunity for for public consultation on this, not just the the main players and the bureaucratic uh groups and so on, but for the for the general public who's actually directly affected by this and may see opportunities and concerns about that. Uh, it maybe in the form of a public hearing on it at some point uh or or something. But uh tho- those are my thoughts. I think we have to look at it in the context context of of what's needed today uh rather than uh the original uh purposes of it and and what might be going on elsewhere.
Thank you, Ms. Adelkova.
So, how it's Director Rothenberger, we have to try and take notes, because you raised a lot of different things. So first, on housing shortages, I would comment that other provinces, but B C has not. Uh, other provinces have overridden zoning bylaws and allowed all single-family dwellings to have suites. Um, that is something that local governments or municipalities in B C can take to U B C M. Our zoning bylaw allows suites in pretty well every zone, except for at Tobiano where they have a CD zone. Hence, you had that rezoning application for the suite like a month ago. Second, since it was in spring when the, our zoning bylaw changed and we just, to allow the second dwelling. So that lit, size limit is only in the ALR, the ninety square meters. Otherwise, it's quite large. So we've had a, as per our graphs earlier, a lot of building permit applications for second dwellings since then. And two thirds of them have been commute, commute to Kamloops. So they're not in I'm, we're just so happy if we actually get a subdivision application in Blue River or um, Spencer's Bridge where we, it's serviced, the policies support it. Not all, most of our subdivision applications, I can provide you more detailed example like I did in two thousand, I think it was February of two thousand nineteen. But we did the work in two thousand eighteen. Um, in terms of uh rural, so we've taken the approach where our two rural zones, our two main rural zones that cover thousands of properties are quite small. So for a lot of developers, it's easier with the RL one to just create four hectare zones. Um, I think what should happen as part of the process is if people want rural properties in certain places, they should be looked at, where does this fit? And put that in OCPs, put that in regional growth strategies. So this is where we would enter, entertain, the board would entertain um, rural residential subdivision. Where it makes sense. I mean, we certainly have that on a lot of lakes, where people have used density averaging and have negotiated that through to get a lot of lake shore development in exchange for protecting ranch lands and what have you beyond. So it's been done before, but it's been done in a less, how would I put it, considered way. It's been done in reaction to an application rather than proactive. But in terms of, in my experience, if this public consultation, you're going to be hearing from people who want to subdivide out their lands, cash out. And that's, that's more likely who you're going to hear from. You're not going to hear from the big, uh, big ranchers and, and farm, farm folk. They're busy.
Thank you.
I just don't think we can assume uh, who we're going to hear from and, and what we're going to say.
Sorry, say again, Director Rothen.
I don't think we can make any assumptions about who we might hear for, from and so on, and, and that that should preclude us from carrying out that process.
Thank you. Uh, Director Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, Regina and I have been ordered this a hundred times in the last ten years. But anyway, I think that when we're looking at AF one and A, AR, or LRF one, never mind, the two zones. One of the things that happens is that they don't consider whether that land can be used for agriculture. Like, there is no way on God's green earth that you could possibly grow a crop on my land. I mean, you could put water on it, but it's gravel. So, when it's in the ALR and it's, it's gravel, the only thing you've got to do is sell the gravel if you want to make a living out of it. Or have a whole bunch of chickens, what are they? So I think that when we're looking at all these AF one zones, et cetera, we need to look to see whether you can actually have agriculture on it or not. And does it have wa- access to water? Is it not in the middle of the desert? And there's other ways around some of these things. You, I mean, most of the people in the hundred and forty acres subdivision that I live in, which we are all on eight, eight hectares, have our water hauled. We have cisterns. There is no water. But that doesn't preclude that we can't do other farming things if we have arable land. But we don't. So why keep us stuck to eight hectares? So there's other ways of looking at this, and I, I'm hoping, uh, because I have spoke with Regina many times, I'm not going to go over it now. That, that is going to be looked at in the future. Because when you're talking about housing, we could house a whole bunch of people who could have their water hauled and you could have a lawn. We can't even have a lawn because the water disappears. So, please take a look at some of those things about when you're looking at housing and you're looking at agriculture. It, they need to call, exist, and they need to be balanced.
Thank you. Director, right, I have Director Rice, Director Singh, Director Watson, Director Brown, and Director Laird. Director Rice?
Uh, well, I appreciate uh, Regina's report and all the hard work and passion she's got in, but this one, this one's pretty near and dear to my heart. When I moved here in nineteen eighty-eight and became a farmer, my dad was having a screaming and yelling match with the TNRD. I think his name was Patty, and it got so bad that uh, um, that uh, my mom wouldn't let him, my stepmom wouldn't let him come to the TNRD because she thought he was going to do something really nasty. And all it was about was sort of putting another house there. My brother and myself moved with our five kids and we had to be in one house because we couldn't have another house. And uh, Net Noni, who was my stepmom's mom, was in a trailer. That had, that trailer had to go because we were, we had too many pieces on the property, and it did go. This is at Hilltop and, and Spencer's Bridge. This is, this is a true story, folks. And so that trailer did go, so did Noni, and uh, and there was just no way to have a family farm. I mean, it, with, with no residents and stuff. I mean, it, it, and I think the ALR and the ALC in the province, when they mapped it in seventy-two and I, I was reading her report and, and you know, I think the problem has, has been one of an urban mindset when there's rural communities like Spencer's Bridge and other areas out in our area, and it continues to be a problem. And I don't think the family farm's ever going to come back. We had ten family farms when I moved there in eighty-eight. We're down to two, two or three. There's three, I think now. And uh, and so I don't think it's something we recover. What I do know is the mapping of fifty years ago is atrocious, as Director Elliott pointed out and stuff. Uh, how do you, how do you devise any kind of policy around mapping? I have a hundred and forty acres. I had it surveyed, four dot four, I can farm. The other uh, whatever, a hundred and thirty-six or whatever, is not farmable. I still can't put a house on it and stuff like that. We, I have my maximum two. And uh, basically, so that being said, I'm not trying to get back the family farm, but I do think there, there, being an outlier in this case, in my, my view is not a bad thing. I think it's, it's at least, at the very least, been a good thing for a lot of people. But it didn't save the family farm, did it? No, it did not. So um, we have continued to have big people come in and, and buy up farms just recently in Spencer's Bridge uh, uh, from Horstings and, and I love Horstings. But you know, that's what's happening. And uh, and they're buying the smaller farms and, and put them into one big farm. And, and I don't know if that's uh, um, throughout the province, certainly in our area it is. And so I really struggle with, when I read the, with, read a well-done report. There's a lot to it. I agree with almost everything Director Rothenberger said, including having a public consultation maybe about this because we need to hear from the rural people. You know, this is, this is not a Kamloops, you know, and the fringe thing. This is a rural thing. Where agriculture, you can't make a living as a small farmer. You can't have a savings account if you're a small farmer. It's just, it's not, you know. Um, so it's not a viable business for sure. It's a great business to be in for a quality of life. But it's not a viable be, uh, business to be in if you want to retire. And uh, and do some other things and stuff like this. So it's not a conversation for today, but I look forward to having that conversation as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, Director Singh.
Boy, I hate to disagree with both Director Rice and Director Rothenberger today, but I'm going to uh, do a bit of that, I think. Uh, this is actually a Kamloops issue in a sense that it's around fringe development around the city of Kamloops. Uh, if most of those applications are coming in around, around the city boundaries. Now, number one, I understand the issue around ALC mapping. It's horrible. We, we all know that, right? It was done almost the back of a napkin, number one. I, I get that, right? Uh, number two, I think that, you know, the, the conversations that I've been part of over the years around the need for, um, need for food supply, uh, atmospheric river, we had all the highways go down. We've had wildfires, we've had all this stuff. And when we don't have enough, if we're taking out farmland, which is, and I'm not talking about a problem that's bad, Director Elliott's problem, that's a spot selling issue in, in my view. Like, if, if we're trying to like enable smaller lots, and it's becoming harder and harder for folks to, to consolidate that for farming, uh, it becomes very challenging for our food supply. Um, it becomes, you know, are we going to always get food from California and Mexico or other places, right? Do we have to look at food uh, closer to home? And so uh, those are issues that I think are, are, are important. I, Director Rothenberger is correct around the city of Kamloops in terms of the ability we have to densify with, you know, airspace and lot sizes in different parts of town. I mean, you know, Brocklers, you know, um, you know, west side places that have, used to have, to have subject systems are now able to have more densification for sure. And so, you know, obviously in the city side, I'm looking at, um, you know, taking a single family lot to make it limited to four boxes or six boxes in terms of uh, you may be blanking zoning over time. So I think those are all really important things to consider. But I, I, I mean, I'm really worried about the loss of um, bigger parcels. Um, a- a- and I do think that actually increasing is something we have to consider over the years. Now, I'm not saying there aren't spot cases. I'm also saying that um, the mapping does, is horrible. ALC, those are in my mind two separate issues. Um, so I think I, I certainly appreciate and do agree with uh, what Director, as I told her saying. Uh, and I also heard that she doesn't want, want, I mean, it's also a question of like, making sure that we're, we're listening to uh, professionals. I, I, I will, will agree with Director Rice and Rothenberger, because we should have public consultation. We should, we, we should engage folks on what we're losing when we actually do this, uh, this uh, smaller lot thing. I mean, there's a lot we, we can lose as well. So people can balance it out. I, 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 I have uh, respect and, and, and well, I have other respect for the voter and for, for the citizens. So I think that we have to go in those ways. But again, the perspective of like, um, not having a food supply um, as close as we need it to town, uh, worries me. And also the idea of fringe development around, getting back to my original point. The, the, you know, when we have fringe development around the city, um, that really hurts uh, our, our work in the city of Kamloops. Make sure that we have a lot of, you know, cause sort of foundational strength w- with our, with our sort of uh, city boundaries. So, thanks.
Director Watson?
Thank you. Uh, Director Elliott and Director Rice uh, brought up most of my points. I, uh, and my cattle farmers will be really pleased that that's what you want to see in our area. Most of cattle grazing is on crown land. It isn't on their own property. Uh, tho- those are their home farms. And most of them are buying hay in my area because um, we don't have really productive land. What we do have is very small communities with affordable land. Um, and if we could get better density, say around seventy mile house, we might be able to afford to have a fire department. Um, and that it just, um, uh, eight hectares of seventy mile gravel isn't going to grow anything other than my rabbits. Thank you. Uh, but I bring in feed for them too. Uh, it's eight hectares is a lot of land for somebody to um, keep fires safe. Whereas four hectares is affordable and uh, two hectares is even better to keep fires safe. So our small communities actually would benefit by smaller parcels. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Brown?
Thank you, Chair Gillis. Um, my comments are in response to, I think I heard you say, Regina, that um, the trend is to have uh, single family or those kind of things built in municipalities. Um, when we reference municipalities, I look at how small our land size is in merit. We have no place to grow. We have ALR land all around us or crown land. Either or, uh, crown land takes us ten to twenty years to even um, try to incorporate. Um, we're looking at increased density. So we've now got one, single family lots that fifty by a hundred and twenty that used to have one home on it, one dwelling, now has five dwellings. And this is how we're building, is this higher density right now. So sooner or later, our, our water and sewer are going to be challenged. Um, and, and we're aware of that somewhere down the road. We're also being inundated by the lower mainland because we are close to the lower mainland, but not that far away in terms of food supply. Um, we have to look at building closer because when we look at the Coca-Cola going down with climate change, um, there was a lot of uh, people that were scrambling for food during that time. Uh, our, our entire supply chain was down. So there are a lot of issues with the, the food supply, but there's a lot of areas in merit that we could expand to if it wasn't ALR land. Uh, and there's a lot of that land around there that is semi-desert and not good for anything. But um, as Sally mentioned, as uh, Director Watson mentioned, um, the farmers are using a lot of crown land for their animals, not necessarily their own land. Um, I, I just need you to know that small communities are not necessarily the only place to be able to build because we are struggling with just having lots to build.
Thank you. Director Laird. Okay, about the only thing I'd wish to add to the, what's been said, uh, Mr. Dukovac, is that uh, I have some concern re what seems to be the impending end of the uh, of the small holding or little hobby farm or whatever you wish to call it. And I think that that would be counter to what we're hoping to achieve in terms of, of uh, having housing and so on for people. I, I think there's a fine line to be drawn between trying to protect our ranchland, which I, I firmly support uh, the protection of ranchland. But I agree with um, particularly with Director Rothenberger and Director Rice because there is a great amount of land that could be made available for building, which wouldn't grow a turnip. So if, if we do nothing else, we should be encouraged, be encouraging the province to redefine the uh, the boundaries of what is and what is not uh, agricultural land reserve. It's just I, I don't think it's a, at all productive just to say, okay, everybody else has bigger uh, minimum parcel sizes, therefore we must have bigger minimum parcel sizes. I think we have to approach this from a different angle altogether. Abs- if you want to protect agricultural land, I'm behind you a hundred percent. Uh, we should be protecting agricultural land, and that goes to what Director Singh's talking about and Director Brown in terms of food supply. But uh, if we just pass a, a, a bylaw that says the minimum parcel size is now sixteen hectares or thirty-two hectares, I think that would be counterproductive. There's no, there's lots of this land that doesn't need to be protected in that way because in the ALR or not, it ain't productive anyway. So uh, I, I would urge you to take a second look at it. But having said that, I would also thank you uh, profoundly for this in-depth report and how much effort's gone into it. I can, I can see that this was not uh, that this was not something that just came uh, came off the cuff. The only thing, other thing I would want to add, because it's something that bugged me a long time ago, and this is my last meeting, and I'm not going to get a chance to bellyache about it any other time. Uh, is, is the fact that I've seen these reports or, or responses from the Agricultural Land Commission that says this is type six or whatever it is agricultural land, and it's not productive right now. But if it were irrigated, uh, it would be just fine. It could, it could produce something. And apart from merit, uh, last November, uh, and some areas, some other areas, we haven't been suffering from an overabundance of water that I can see. And water seems to be an increasingly scarce commodity, and these marginal lands are never, ever going to be irrigated. So uh, you know, some of the things that Uh you know, some of the things that come out of that agricultural land commission are silly, at least in 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 my view. And I I don't think we can just accept it wholeless, bullous. So having said that, uh I've got that off my chest, Director Rothenberger, and then we're clo- we're going to take a break.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, this has been a a really interesting discussion, and and I think it uh. It requires further discussion that goes beyond, obviously, the term of this board. Uh and I I would like to see uh see the process continue on that, and i- there seems to be some. Agreement that uh a next step might be to uh consult further with the public and to bring the. Public into this discussion, so I'd like to try a motion that uh the committee of the whole recommend to the board, I assume that we can't do it. Ourselves, that the T N R D engage in public consultation on minimum lot size.
Is there any further discussion on this, or is everybody happy that this has been discussed to death? All in favor? Any opposed? Directors Blackwell and O'Reilly and Singh are opposed. And Director Schaefer, okay, it's carried. And with that, I think we should probably break for fifteen minutes, and then we'll come back for. What I anticipate will be a scintillating moment uh with uh Mr. Scrapnick, thank you.
We are officially back in session following the coffee recess. And Mr. Vera is going to introduce Mr. Scrapnick and talk to us about his new position, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and yeah, I think uh Mr. Scrapnick doesn't need much of introduction, you guys have uh heard from him many times before here. But I did just want to sort of formally introduce him in his new capacity that uh I guess today is his last day under his current title as emergency program. Coordinator, and uh he'll be moving in as our new manager of community and emergency services. So I just wanted to clarify what that means, so that essentially means he's gonna be overseeing all the the emergency program at at under his current role. Um uh so we'll be back filling the emergency program coordinator position that he's vacating, he'll also be overseeing. The community services function, so our community halls, our uh cemeteries, our park system. As well as the invasive plant control programs under the the inva- the uh community services department as well. So uh yeah, I'm really excited for this uh transition for him, he's been with us for the last almost two years. Um but it's probably seemed like a lot longer, he started just at the beginning of COVID. And then went straight into twenty twenty-one fire season, straight into the atmospheric river in twenty twenty-one. Uh so uh he's been uh definitely got a lot of experience under his belt since he's been with us. And I've been really happy to work alongside him and in those years and happy to work alongside him in his new role. So he's gonna come in and give us an update on the emergency services program over the last, I guess, six months since you heard from him last.
Oh, good morning, everyone, um so uh I'm I'm acutely aware that I'm the last item on the agenda. Uh of the last uh meeting of this iteration of the board, so I'll keep it to a modest seventy slides or so uh before we head into lunch. Uh no, so probably unsurprisingly, uh and particularly compared to last year, thankfully, uh we have a lot less to talk about. Than we did at this time uh uh last uh last fall. Uh twenty twenty-two compared to last year, although I I think fair to say, uh most years compared to last year would seem fairly mild. Uh but certainly, uh thankfully, this year, we uh we didn't encounter nearly as much activity. Um so I'll talk a little bit about the year that was uh in terms of emergency response, and then just a little bit on on what we're looking at going forward. So. This kind of uh. New normal phrase that often gets bandied about, I I I think it it's almost kind of turned into a bit of a uh a bit of a buzzword, but. The fact of the matter is, we are, you know, entering into a bit of a new phase here. Um the three worst fire seasons in our recorded history took place in the last five years. So you know, there's, there's some very real changes happening, events like the atmospheric river last year are fairly unprecedented as well. So you know, this is unfortunately, uh you know, we we had a break this year, and really, there's an error on this slide, it should say twenty twenty-two so far. Because obviously, uh the atmospheric river last year was into November, and that was uh, you know, in the one of the most catastrophic events we ever experienced in this region. So still need to be vigilant, even though certainly we've had a a bit of a break this year as we uh enter into the fall storm season. So yeah, by comparison, last year, uh well over three hundred evacuation alerts and orders, uh two hundred ninety-three were just for the wildfire season alone. And then uh at least a dozen, if not more, once we entered the atmospheric river compared to three this year. So a much more manageable year in terms of what happened, obviously, uh still uh on a on a micro level, still. Uh very impactful things going on, but compared to last year, definitely a a different order of magnitude. So in terms of the start spring freshet, uh as you'll remember, uh. Earlier in the year, there were some fairly alarming numbers getting thrown around, around particularly the snowpack uh for the Thompsons uh and elsewhere in the region. Uh and I think this kind of goes to show, um you know, obviously, we were very concerned about it, and the numbers in many areas were record-setting in terms of how much snow there was to melt. But when it was all said and done, just the way the season played out, thankfully, we didn't see any large scale snow melt driven flooding. So certainly, though, we did do a lot of preparedness for that eventuality. So we had dozens of locations throughout the regional district where we had deployed sand and sandbags for folks to use protecting private property. This was one such site in Birch Island. You'll see on the right there that is near the boat launch in Savana, quite a bit of woody debris that was kind of caught up in Kamloops Lake, just given the weather patterns we were having that got accumulated onto the beach and presented a bit of a concern in terms of some areas of Savanna are quite low lying and obviously a sandbag wall or something less robust is going to be challenged if there's also big logs, woody debris in the mix as well. So we did actually in Savanna deploy some flood protection measures in late June. The forecast from the province did indicate that we were going to be breaking the one and 20 year flood barrier, which does impact the O E Street there right on the waterfront. So that was with the assistance of B C wildfire, Ministry of Transportation, E M B C and some local contractors as well. Thankfully, the water didn't end up getting that high, but we had it in place for about a month and a half there in case that that did come together. And really, by the time the season came and went, other than some localized flooding in Savanna and in Blackpool, there wasn't a whole lot of concern. So again, just a good cautionary tale. Sometimes we work ourselves into a bit of a lather when we get these forecasts in the spring and they don't always necessarily come to fruition. And sometimes we don't have any idea that it's coming and and that's when we can get wallwork as well. So in terms of the fire season, again, quite a bit quieter than last year. So the two fires that had evacuation alerts and orders associated with them was the Nahamine Creek Fire on the west side of the Fraser from Litton, which is on the left there. Interestingly enough, that photo was taken, we were on helicopter flight out to a property on Highway eight that was impacted by the atmospheric river to go in there and try to move a trailer out of the way from going into the river. And while we were on our way, we spotted the new fire at Litton. So again, into this system of kind of compounding response, different emergencies happening concurrently. And then on the right there, joint meeting we had with Litton First Nation and B C wildfire service. It's in an ideal world, we can be out there a lot more doing this is at the Litton First Nation, the health center there on the reserve. Because we didn't have as much activity this year, we had the capacity and the resources to get out in the field a lot more and do things like this, which is without a question, the best practice, but obviously that's going to be dependent on on our capacity in a year like last in 2021. It's not always possible to do that. The other kind of fire of concern was the one northwest of town here at Watching Creek that flared up over the B C day long weekend. That did have an evacuation alert as well, but didn't really kind of turn into anything beyond that. Now, with those two fires, so with Nahamine, there were no primary residences lost on T N R D properties. Unfortunately, there were some on Litton First Nation. There was certainly damage to a number of properties in T N R D infrastructure, at least one unoccupied cabin equipment, you know, quite a bit of kind of structural things here and there, but no, no kind of primary dwellings, thankfully. And certainly none of that as well with the Watching Creek fires in a very isolated area. We did have quite a bit and again, kind of dovetailing on the comment about the fresh forecast, you know, similarly, like we had a, we had a very hot summer. Obviously, a bit of a cool start and and that that June pattern, the rains in June and the temperatures in June are are a huge driver of how the summer goes. So I think that's really what we owe the quiet summer to, even though July and August had some in some cases, record breaking in terms of how sustained the heat was, not necessarily the temperatures. The fact that we had that wet and prolonged spring is really what kept things in check for us for the most part. We did see quite a bit of lightning as well. So that screen on the right there is a lightning detection system. So very valuable things like this, so we can see these systems coming in both from a fire perspective, but also you know, from a rain and landslide perspective, which is the next piece we're going to talk about here. So we had two fairly major events that were mudslides, arguably both post wildfire events. So one of them was in Monty Lake in Lake, late June, which is on the right there. So this was a very intense, very isolated system that hits in the worst possible spot. Basically, the kind of two to three kilometer corridor of the community of Monty Lake on the east side of the lake there only rained for about 15 or 20 minutes, but it was such a volume that it caused some considerable damage. It's honestly, that's my understanding that at least one or two pets unfortunately perished, but just given how intense and how quick this came together, the fact that there wasn't a loss of life or limb is is honestly quite quite surprising. So this was, this was a big concern. The province did go in and do some assessments afterwards in terms of what exactly happens and what can be done to mitigate. On the left here was the mudslide that took place on Highway eight in late August. This was around the kind of Egitsin Dot F X Ranch area. Again, the worst possible place at the worst possible time. This was an area. I've I've been to these properties three times now. Once was after they were burned out in mid-August, after the cold front came through. The second time was in November after they were hammered from the atmospheric river and then again with this. So these folks have have had to deal with quite a bit in the last 12 to 14 months here. So you can just kind of get a sense of the the amount of material that came down. The highway was compromised in a number of areas. It was reopened within a day or so, but still quite a bit of damage to T N R D properties, but as well as to Shack and First Nation as well. And then still lingering and not a not an insignificant amount of the work that we did over the course of this year is still properties that are either impacted or still threatened from what occurred in November with the atmospheric river. So primarily on the Nicola and Coldwater Systems, Spias Creek, et cetera. So on the right here, the the photo I had taken of the the fire in this distance, this was the property we were heading to. This is a trailer had already been moved once to get it further away from the Nicola and it was just continuing to erode as time went on. So thankfully, we were able to get that moved out with some heavy equipment and it's now in a a spot that that should be safe going forward. On the left here is a property on Spias Creek. You can see significant amount of riprap rocks, things like that. Steve?
I just wanted to point out that we passed a Buter Bridge initiative, a letter of support, and that is Ed Buters place, I believe, is it not?
Yeah, Chair, through the Director Rice, correct you on the right, that is, that is the Buter.
Put some perspective into that letter. I just wanted to let her read them. That is how close Ed's place was going down.
Yeah. And it's interesting to look at the before and after photos of where that where that structure was in relation to the river prior to the event. Some considerable erosions happened. So I'm still definitely dealing with a lot of the after effects from the atmospheric river and we likely will be for some time going forward. There is also, we put in a we'll call it a temporary burn in Brookmere as well with support from the province, just given the extent of damage that occurred there as well. There's concerns with some log jams as well that are upstream of the community. And we're working with Ministry of Forests in terms of trying to get prepared for that as we head into the to the storm season. So in terms of going forward, I won't, I won't dwell on it too much because it's been discussed a number of times. And I know there was a bit of an update from U B C M that Director Christian and Director Singh had passed on to the group, but the province is ostensibly finally going to be moving forward with the update to the Emergency Program Act. It's been in the works for a number of years now. It was initially supposed to be in early 2020. Obviously, that was curtailed due to COVID. They were going to take another run at it last year and that was curtailed by everything that happened last year. So because so much time has passed since the initial consultation that occurred in 2019, they are going to be reopening it. It's my understanding that's going to be through the U B C M Flood and Wildfire Advisory Committee that Director Singh is currently sits on. And there is, that's going to be for the local government aspect and there is a kind of co-development occurring with indigenous communities as well. And that's been ongoing since June and that's tied into the province's commitment to the U N declaration of rights for indigenous peoples. So the the update to the act is a good thing without question based on what our understanding of what's going to be coming with it, but there certainly will be some growing pains and it's going to take time for it to fully roll out. The intention is for the legislation to be introduced spring 2023 with it being in effect for the fall 2023, but there's also a number of separate individual regulations that are going to have to be updated as well. So it could take some time before it's kind of fully in place and fully fully operational. As I said, welcome change is coming, but also is going to increase the amount of requirements and responsibilities placed on local authorities. So we will have to kind of respond to it as it comes into place. And then for T N R D going forward, so Jamie has already alluded to obviously the the organizational changes departmentally we are doing here. So yeah, we will be, we're in the process of filling the vacancy. I'll be leaving for the emergency program coordinator. We're also going to be hiring a new administrative assistant for the department as well. So just generally some more capacity there. I know it's already been mentioned, but obviously the the fire smart portfolio under Jeremy Danny with fire protection as well. Obviously, it's it's living in that area, but that'll be a, we'll have a big part of that going forward as well. And I think really a lot of going forward is going to be around partnerships. As we've seen, these emergencies really don't pay heed to any of our administrative boundaries. So we're already part of a number of kind of subregional groups that have come together. So we formed a relationship with City of Kamloops and Kamloops to Shouhatma. So that started in the midst of the 2021 fire season. So we meet biweekly with that group. And we are looking at the potential for some mutual aid agreements and things like that. There is a Nicola Valley kind of emergency group that is fairly ad hoc right now, but it meets regularly. That's actually where I'm heading to this afternoon. We're going to be meeting in Logan Lake. And then the they've called themselves the Lake Division Group and that is Niskon with Adams Lake, Columbia, Shu Shu, Up ourselves and Village of Chase. Just looking at kind of mutually in that area. So that as well as kind of the ongoing work in terms of coordination with First Nations. And then to with the current structure of our program in terms of our support to the member municipalities as well. So seven of which are part of our emergency program. So looking at what that service agreement is, you know, what whether it is a service agreement or what other apparatus or mechanism we use and just with the changes that are coming with the Emergency Program Act. You know, what changes need to happen to those agreements just to make sure that we're all going to be adhering to it. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Director Staber, Director Polderman and Director Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks very much for the presentation, Kevin. I got a couple of quick ones because I know everybody's itching to go. Number one, on the watching creek response time, how long did it take for an incident commander to be on site? That's number one. And number two, going forward, how much involvement will the T N R D have with all fire mitigation and fire smarting communities throughout the T N R D with the new crews, i.e. the new SIM vehicle and crew? Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure. Yeah. So on the watching creek one, I can, I can look into that and get back to you. I know that that fire did burn for a few days before it really blew up. So what, yeah, what the response looked like in that initial time, I know terrain was a challenge there too, but I'll I'll work with B C wildfire and get a response for you on that. On the mitigation piece, so yeah, so spoke a little bit already, but yeah, the so the fire smart portfolio going under Jeremy is, I think, kind of given it the for the first time, it's always kind of been on the corner of a desk of a corner of a desk. So we've now got it sort of dedicated to someone and Jeremy, to his credit, has really kind of been hitting the ground running on that. So I think by by next year, we're going to start to see some new programs and opportunities and maybe maybe Jamie will want to tie down on that. And then we're also kind of separate from the fire smart specifically. We're also a part of a few community roundtables that the province put together. So one of them being for Chase and the other for Clearwater around just fire preparedness, fire prevention, things like that. So those are funded by the province. It was a bit of a trial program, but hopefully we see that starting to expand to other communities as well.
Thank you, Director Polderman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one correction on your report. There was a house lost on the Mandell Ranch along with the barn, along with his the tool shed. I believe that is an area. Thank you.
Director Singh.
Thank you, Dr. Gills. I just a couple of things. Number one was on the E P modernization is brilliant. I was talking about that last time and Mr. Skravnik's comments, yeah, the the financial piece of it's going to have to really be figured out and we are definitely advocating for the province to fund local authorities, local governments and indigenous communities for your requirements that the EPA might might have for us. I've talked about the real this except for four and I unfortunately have to go. So I just wanted to say it's been a true honor serving with all of you over the course of this term and all of raised best wishes and everything going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rice.
Yeah, just more of a comment. Thank you, Chair, on to shout out to Jamie and and Kevin, of course, and they've continued to work with me and and I know Chief Minneberry at a Cooks Ferry and and that trailer that everybody saw there in that picture. That was a discussion for about two weeks that went on and how in the hell are we going to move that? So that debris will not go down that river and they're involved in those conversations with the province and and E M B C and and I appreciate, you know, those efforts and stuff, the efforts that really they did not have to make, but they did make on behalf and they've continued to to help us out there on Highway eight and it's a long ways away before everybody's going to be back home, but we're making some great progress. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Are there any further questions? I don't see any. I want to take this opportunity to congratulate you on your promotion, Mr. Skravnik. An open secret that I was very, very pleased when you came on board with the with the T N R D and I'm happy that you're able to advance within the organization. It's important to keep people like you and congratulations on that. So if you're looking forward to adjournment, I'm not quite ready to entertain that motion. Sorry to disappoint you. But I did want to say, because this is the last meeting that I will chair, that it has been an honor and and for the most part, a pleasure to serve as your chair for these past four years. And I want to thank you for the opportunity that you gave me to do that. It's been, it's been quite an experience and and I do appreciate having had that opportunity. And I want to thank those who've supported me throughout this time. I think that we can all be very, very gratified by the fact that we are turning over to the new board a much, much better organization than the one we assumed in November of 2018. And I think that the next board will have a much easier time of it than we have had, but we we did the hard work. We took the heat for it. But we did the hard work. We've got it behind us and I think, as I said, the next board will have a much, much easier time of it. So thank you, everybody for that. And now Director Steamer, I'll thank you.